The agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, I'll lead it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There's the flag. Thank you Courtney. Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda, which this, this meeting just consists of the minutes from the regular council meeting on April 21st.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Got a motion to approve the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second Jason, discussion. There being none, we'll do a roll call vote, Jason.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Uh, let's see, who we got, we got Mike.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Motion passes. We'll move to administration illegal, item A. Resolution twenty dash seventeen, accepting the bid for the Second Street Southwest and Kennelley Court Southwest project.
Aye. Motion passes. We'll move to administration illegal, item A. Resolution twenty dash seventeen, accepting the bid for the Second Street Southwest. Court Southwest project.
That's not gonna work.
We'll move to administration illegal, item A.
That's interesting. So, I'm tough to listen to anyway, you don't wanna listen to me twice.
I bless America, right?
Okay, alright, so uh. Item A, resolution twenty dash seventeen, accepting the bid, do we need to do anything? Craig, you wanna talk about that? Or is that just a action item? And I think we approved the bid last month if we didn't, if not mistaken.
Yep, that's right, we um, had the bid results from the opening, that happened on the 21st. Um, so um, so the resolu- resolution in front of you is just um, approving the bid to Schumacher Excavating. Uh, they've done a lot of work in, in Pine Island and uh, we recommend approval um, of the uh, of the bid.
I'll move approval, resolution twenty seventeen.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Jason, a second by Kelly, to approve resolution twenty dash seventeen, any further discussion?
No, I just um, our own Brandon Sather, Part Three Landscaping has the, has the grading and sodding on that job. So that's a very, that's a feel-good for us, I think, right? That more of that job is local, anyway.
Yeah, especially that particular, Craig will tell you on past street projects, uh, we've had issues with follow-up on getting the sod kinda watered. And you know, we've been through that several times now, so we all know where Brandon lives.
Right, heavy hand.
We're not depending on an outside contractor, that, that is a good thing, Mike. Okay, we got a motion, a second, any further discussion? There being none, we'll do a roll call, Jason.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
And I'll vote aye, thank you. Uh, item B, resolution twenty eighteen, uh, awarding the sale of the general obligation improvement note. Mike, are you gonna talk about that?
I'd like to.
Well, there you go.
Well, um, my presentation tonight is gonna be a little different than what I've done a couple of different times in front of this council, in terms of financing a project. Uh, normally I come to a meeting like, well, not like this, but normally I would come to an initial meeting and just provide recommendations. I wouldn't provide a actual proposal at this point. And then I would come back a month later, and then I would present the results based on those recommendations. Um, I'm actually here with an actual proposal, you'll see uh, in your packets, the proposal's actually with Pine Island Bank, uh, via one of Minnesota Rural Waters Loan Programs. Um, the other thing that's different than what I would normally do is, normally a deal of this size and length is a no-brainer. I would suggest a credit-rated competitive sale in the public markets. Costs a little more to do, but it help, usually gets you the best deal overall when you look at your total payments. Um, and I've been telling this story now for the last few weeks, but it all started with Spring Grove a few weeks back. I went in to do recommendations for a water tower financing for them. It was gonna be a rated competitive sale. And uh, that day, before the meeting, I checked bond sales in Minnesota and the rates had gone crazy. Which was weird because going into the weekend prior, the Fed had indicated they were gonna cut rates. So I actually went into the week thinking the rates that I had shown the council would be even better than what I had prepared. And they went the exact opposite direction. Um, so that night I said, we need to do a different strategy here, so they had authorized me to do a bank placement. Um, so we placed it with a, uh, with a bank, and I think we beat the market by half a point, three-quarters of a point at the time. I have done almost exclusively bank placements since that time. Um, even today, uh, so, so I chatted this over with Elizabeth and I said, you know what, there's a lot of risks here. One is, Pine Island's pretty strong, I don't know that they would change your rating, but I do know that the muni market as a sector, not you individually, but as a sector, has a negative outlook, both with Moody's and Standard and Poor's. So my concern was, is you know, in a month's time, where are we gonna be at with that? And then, with the interest rates, as you'll see in the um, uh, the handout that Elizabeth uh, emailed out this afternoon, that gap that I discussed with Spring Grove had closed. But, I've talked to some trading desks who think it's just gonna widen again. It, it, nobody knows, everyone's absolutely confused, so I believe in this time of uncertainty, certainty has value. So talking with Elizabeth, I suggested, why don't we try to get a bank placement that competes as well as or better than what would happen in the public markets? And then, and just feel good about things, uh, that, you know, we're, we're okay, we know we got, and got an acceptable deal. Um, now I will say, before we talk about the proposal itself, it's also in your packets, Elizabeth was good enough to include the snapshots of that capital financial planning model we use. And I can tell you that, based on, our borrowing is smaller than what we anticipated. The interest rate is lower than we put in that model, and so our revenue requirement is lower um, than what we put in that model. Furthermore, the other project unrelated, which is your water tower project, we had $700,000 budgeted in there for that. And I understand it's gonna be two, $300,000 less. So, on both points, we're ahead of our planning. Um, so it just makes me feel double fuzzy about where we're at compared to, you know, moving forward. Um, so the, the proposal that you have is through Minnesota Rural Water, the city has accessed this program before through a, I think it was a micro or a midi loan. Also with Pine Island Bank, who coincidentally is just one of the pool of banks, Pine Island Bank, Sambrota Bank, um, First Independent Bank of Russell, and uh, Northview Bank up in Finland, Finley, Finless in Minnesota, those are their four banks. Well, knowing that's their four banks, I contacted Chris Nelson at Pine Island Bank, because obviously that makes sense. Uh, and then Jeff Para was involved as well. And so they provided us with what I think is a, a pretty fair deal, so in the handout that came this afternoon, did everyone see that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I basically took the sale from yesterday, I didn't have a perfect comparison, you know, so I took a triple A rated Yzetta, and I just added a quarter point to it. And I gave it full issuance cost as if we did a hypothetical competitive rated sale, and then I looked at the total overall revenue requirement for the bond issue, and you can see it's almost identical. Now you can quibble with me, you know, I added a quarter point because Pine Island historically has been a double A minus rated city. I mean, you can quibble if that should be a little less or a little more, but I think what it does uh, show is that this competes very, very well with the public market, and it's in our hand, and it's one in the hand is worth doing the bush. Um, my concern is, you know what, a month from now, rates could be down and you're gonna wanna kick me in the butt, but I think this is a very good deal, it's ahead of our planning, and I, I just like the idea of certainty. So, you're not required to take this deal by any means, but uh, I strongly advise we move forward with it.
Yeah, I, I think it's a positive, first of all, like Mike says, we're using local. Secondly, uh, I anticipate, I don't know, we're gonna see some kinda negative impact on our revenue next year. The LGA could go down, our tax base could go down, there could be a lot of things happen, so just saving a little money on this end is, makes a lot of sense, it does.
Yeah, and Elizabeth and I chatted about that very concern as well. Um, I've done, oh, close to two handful of deals here this spring, and you know, the, the question has come up, you know, do we need to be concerned about doing projects now? And I, and I'm like, you know, good economy, bad economy, you gotta have streets, you gotta have water towers, right? Those are the, the essential services that we have to have. If, if we find that we're in a pinch, um, it's the other things that should be taken, maybe there's some capital purchases uh, that can be delayed. Maybe there's some amenities in the city that you wouldn't get rid of forever, but maybe on a temporary basis you could delay. Um, but I would also mention that, um, Pine Island also has a pretty healthy amount of reserves in various funds of the city. And in a hodgepodge way, if you needed to, you're in a better position than some cities, that if that happens, um, you'll be able to continue to cash flow, at least on a temporary basis. So, um, you know, the concern, Elizabeth and I shared that concern with me, and I'm like, wow, you're not gonna get a better cost of the road, you're not gonna get, you know, rates could go down, but they can't go down by much. Um, it just seems like this, in the long run, you're gonna be very happy you, you secured this.
Any other questions, comments for Mike?
No, I'd just like to add, from what I, excuse me, from what I understand in past council meetings, the severity of this project is, is pretty bad. Both the underground and the surface are in poor condition, so even if we do have these financial concerns, Mike, I appreciate the work you've done in comparing other projects as things rapidly change. But again, this needs to happen, so pushing it off isn't gonna do us any good.
No, uh, I can, I can tell Council Public Works Director Robertson shared with me that we had a camera down some of the sewers today, and we've got some sewer pipe underneath Second Street, but the pipe's just not there anymore, so um, it's, yeah, it, yeah.
Oh, we have to do it.
Definitely cannot wait.
So, so that's what the truck was in the middle of the road, cameras, okay.
Yeah, and, and if we get into a, and, and you know, we've got some definite ideas on ongoing projects past this year, we'll just see what happens. If, if we get to the middle of budgetary process and it looks like there is a dramatic impact, we can defer some of these future projects back a year or two and, and recollect our reserves. And you know, I think this is just a really important project, and uh, thank you so much, Mike, for all your work, and thank you Craig, I think Craig, you're happy with the bids, right?
Yeah, very happy, yep, they came in underestimated and, and under feasibility, so.
And Mr. Mayor, I just wanna add that Counselor Freeze, although he's not here, he is in support as well, and he just wanted to echo that he believes that this project is something that we need to move forward with, so.
Yep, okay. Any other questions or comments for Mike Bubani? Mike, I wanna take a second and introduce you virtually to Mitch Massman, who is our new uh, CETA representative for our PDA. Mitch, this is Mike Bubani, who is our financial guru. Um, you guys will be seeing quite a bit of each other, but uh, I wanted to introduce you formally, so. Okay, well, we've uh, it's an action item, so uh, resolution twenty eighteen.
I'll move resolution twenty eighteen, awarding the sale of general obligation improvement note, as Mike has laid out for us.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
I can second.
Second Jason, discussion. There being none, roll call vote, Jason.
Yes.
Kelly.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye, motion passes. We'll move to uh, item C on administration legal, we've got a resolution twenty dash nineteen, accepting the bid for the Island Heights Water Tower Project, which once again, came much cheaper than we expected. Uh, probably works here, is there?
No, I don't think Todd's able to, um, he's not on, I don't know Craig, if you wanna review the bid, otherwise I can as, I can too. Um, but I, I know the bid came in, yeah, a lot less than what we had anticipated.
Yep, so um, one of the first things is, we had uh, seven bids on the project, which we were um, planning on having three or four, so um, and as you can see from the um, uh, from the bidding list here, uh, some of these companies came from uh, a long ways away, even uh, Florida. Uh, there was a, a firm out of Florida that came up to, to bid on it, so there was a lot of interest in the project, which led to some good numbers here. Um, we haven't worked with Preferred Tank and Tower before, uh, they're out of Henderson, Kentucky, uh, they were the low price bid at 371,000 for the base bid, which included the uh, recoating of the tank. And then there was an alternate for uh, the addition of a mixer in the tank, which circulates the water and prevents it from freezing up. So, uh, we, we uh, ran that as an alternate, just to see what the price would come in at, and um, the engineer's estimate was a little under 600,000, and they um, submitted a price of 399,000. Uh, so we did call around on, uh, they sent us a list of references, uh, we called on, around on them, and uh, um, uh, everyone we talked to was happy with the work they had done. Um, uh, they gave us a list of subcontractors, and we called around on um, a few of the references that they sent us, um, and had similar reports. So, uh, we were comfortable recommending approval of the um, of the bid to Preferred Tank and Tower out of Henderson, Kentucky. For both the base and alternate bid.
Okay. Questions for Craig? If not, it's.
Over resolution twenty nineteen.
Got a motion to approve twenty nineteen, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Discussion, further discussion?
I, I was just about to ask if you had called, since we hadn't worked with this company before, I was just about to ask if we had seen what other people's experiences were, so I'm glad that that due diligence was done to call and contact those references, thank you.
Yep, thank you Craig. Further discussion? There being none, all those, and well, actually, Jason.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
I'll be, I'll vote aye also, motion passes. Uh, item D, looks like our last major discussion point here is uh, the liquor licensing ordinance discussion, and I know Bob, we reached out to you, we've got a unique, I'm not sure it's that unique, but we've got a problem in Pine Island. Uh, the, the state of Minnesota is the last bastion of 3.2 beer, and Pine Island Golf Course has always had a 3.2 beer license. And that was okay, except what happened is the beer uh, breweries, distilleries quit making 3.2 because there's, we're the only state that they sell to, and so the inventory's gone down, and so Pine Island's sitting out there going, we're going into the summer with the possibility of not being able to sell any beer on the golf course. And that's a fairly significant revenue item for that golf course, so we're reaching out to Bob and the council and anybody else that can help us try to figure out a way to get a license in their hands, to allow them to sell strong beer. They don't need, they really don't need wine, they don't need any liquor, they just need to be able to sell strong beer, and the state, I'm not sure they're even in session. Uh, but if they are, you know, I, I don't, we're not gonna see any quick resolution of this, so hopefully there's some kind of a remedy here. And uh, Bob, we did reach out to you, I know you've got people in this arena, and uh, just looking for your thoughts.
Yeah, so Mayor and Council, uh, yes, Elizabeth and I have talked a little bit about that, and uh, I guess the starting point is to say, as all of you, I suspect, would know, there are plenty of golf courses or similar type recreational facilities in Minnesota that sell what a lot of people call strong beer, although more than three-two is not really strong beer these days, but sell strong beer. Um, and uh, are similarly situated to the Pine Island Golf Course, right? They're, they're similar type community golf courses, and they've found ways in those communities to ma- to make it happen. So, the bottom line is, there is a way to do it, uh, we see it in other communities, it can be done. I guess what Elizabeth and I have talked about is, of course, what we've had, what we've been having in parallel here is, you've got a exciting opportunity for a new uh, brewery, uh, it's to join your community, and we're gonna need to make some tweaks to your uh, liquor, beer licensing uh, provisions to make that happen as well. I, I think Elizabeth will correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we hope to bring forward in tandem both the amendments to your code to do that, to facilitate the new exciting brewery slash restaurant, um, that you may uh, and expect to have in your community, and then also to allow, to, to create a, a mechanism to allow um, a, a club, uh, a golf course like the Pine Island Golf Course, uh, to sell what, what folks call strong beer. There's kind of two ways to do it, I don't wanna get too far into the weeds, but there's kind of two ways to do it. You can issue licenses that would allow the sale of strong beer to either a club, uh, and the way club is defined in state law is a little bit less restrictive than the way you've defined it in your city code, so we can loosen up that definition a little bit uh, in your city code. The other way to do it is that any, a place that is a restaurant, air quotes, I'll put my rabbit ears up here, that is a, a restaurant, um, as defined in state law, uh, can be issued a license that would allow the sale of strong beer. Again, you have more restrictively in Pine Island defined what a restaurant is than you are required to do under state law, that is to say, more businesses in town that serve food could be characterized as a restaurant than your code says are restaurants, and that includes the Pine Island Golf Course. So we have a couple of avenues to, to figure out, now, I think Elizabeth and I are gonna figure out sort of the easiest, most sensible way to do that. The last thing I would say, and Elizabeth do pipe in on this, uh, of course, as I think all of you would know, or, or um, would know if you asked around, the city not so long ago, a little less than a decade, a little more than a decade ago, operated a municipal liquor store, uh, and you ended up not continuing that. Your city code, like many cities that have city-provided liquor sales, uh, beer and liquor sales, your city code reflected that, your city code was restrictive with respect to private businesses being in the alcohol sales business, because you, the city, were in that business. And although we amended your code some, when you, the city, got out of the business, we didn't go as far in amending your city code as we could have in making it like other cities that don't have municipal uh, alcohol sales. So we didn't go all the way in updating and amending your city code to make you a non-city uh, alcohol sales city, maybe you want to do that now, I mean, that, that would be another approach, would be to simply repeal entirely your current city uh, alcohol licensing provision and replace it in, in toto completely with a updated, sort of more modern uh, city code provision that reflects a city that is like your city, that is not a, a municipal liquor city.
And Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna jump in, um, just to kinda mirror what Bob said, uh, going through our liquor licensing, I've looked into a lot of surrounding communities, uh, their liquor license, licensing as well, and I can let you know that ours is a lot more restrictive than most communities, and I think that's why it's been difficult to navigate for our businesses here in town, as well as trying to add in language for the brewery, just because we, we do seem to have um, very restrictive liquor licensing, limiting the amount of how many lights, on-sale and off-sale licenses we can give. Um, I haven't seen that in a lot of the other surrounding communities, so I would just mirror Bob's recommendation in saying it might be best just to repeal our entire liquor license code and um, kinda start from scratch and um, have a code that mirrors the state licensing system a little bit better, because ours um, i- is a bit different, and it's, it's difficult for even um, Stephanie or Clerk and I to navigate uh, what restaurants and what liquor stores and bars need to do through the state as well, and then get licensed in the city. So it'd be, it'd be a lot easier for us as well if our city code mirrored that of the, the states.
Uh, Bob, question. Uh, are you implying that if we can massage our code a little bit and make it more uh, accommodating, that we, that, would we have to re-license all the liquor distributors? Or we're just, they would all, they're already licensed, so they'd fall under just this new code, right? And we have the sole authority, we don't have to apply for a new license at the state?
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, so Mayor, on those two points, great, great questions. Um, the cities we work with are all recognizing that bars and restaurants that serve alcohol are, are hit pretty hard here, um, and, and are struggling to stay alive. And I, I'm not aware of any cities that we work with that are looking to be more restrictive or impose, impose new uh, limits or require new licenses, and you wouldn't have to do that. If you amend your code, either sort of amend it just to allow the brewery and to allow a license to the golf course, or do what Elizabeth and I are suggesting, which is repeal the whole thing and just bring in a new code section that's updated and, and modern. Either way you did it, you don't have, we, we can grandfather, we can, we can uh, reserve the rights of those that have already received licenses for the term of their license, we, we don't expect new fees and a new process, and, and I don't think you want that uh, either, and, and none of the communities I work with want that. So, uh, that, that's the answer to that, and then, and then um, what was the other part of your question? I've forgotten, I blathered too much.
We don't need state authorization.
Oh. Yeah, no, and so, and that, that's a misperception that, that folks have, and we aren't going this direction, but let me just say it to make the point, ci- cities in Minnesota don't have to allow alcohol sales in their city at all. You can have a dry city in Minnesota, a city doesn't have to provide for alcohol sales licensing at all, and a city can say, we're not, we're not gonna issue any licenses to anybody for any alcohol sales. Very few cities do that, but that, that's a theoretical possibility, and so on that continuum, you can go from all the way to be in a dry city to having a very restrictive code, which I would characterize yours as being pretty restrictive, up to just simply allowing what the state allows, which is what most frankly cities do. Um, and if that's, if that's the will of the council to sort of, let's get consistent with the state of Minnesota and how it deals with alcohol sales, which by the way is already a little bit um, out of step with some of the other states in the country, but if you wanna catch up to the state, um, that's perfectly doable, we would just get rid of what you have now and, and bring in, I mean, I can just grab it frankly, a sample from another city that's got an updated code, and we, you know, will need to go through it, Elizabeth and I, but, but that can be done fairly simply, um, and uh, we would just replace what you have now and catch you up.
This, Bob, these changes to our code are feasible, we, we could have ready for the May meeting, I mean, is that?
Yeah, I mean, I, if Elizabeth hears tonight that we should do it, I will grab a sample tomorrow and get it to her, and she and I can work through it as fast as she and I can work through things, and I guess we've, I think we would agree that we can work through this in a week or so and, and get it in front of you.
And, and I mean, you, you know the, probably you, you know most of the new code, we would consider the golf course is still gonna have to make a decision whether they're gonna go the club route or the restaurant route, I assume. Um, and I mean, Rod, are we, I mean, I, I'm all for doing whatever we can to help the golf course, I get it, that, that beer sales is a huge part of their income, but I mean, their board needs to meet and decide, kind of in concert with us changing code, what they're, I mean, essentially, we've got nothing before us from the golf course, with what?
No, you're just taking my word for it.
With what, well?
You know, and, and I, because they called me, and, and, and I got with Elizabeth and Bob and everybody else, yeah, they haven't, I'm not sure they need to act to change their license status, uh, uh, but they, they'll do, let me just tell you, they're gonna do whatever it takes.
Well, right, I'm just assuming, I mean, they, they need probably to make some structural changes if they're gonna call themselves a club or a restaurant, or that, yeah, okay.
Yeah, there might be, you're right, Mike, there might be some insurance uh, protocol, I mean, there might be.
I just don't wanna get to the May meeting and have us have jumped through all the hoops we needed, and I mean, I, I get it, you're in communication with them, and so.
Yeah, my, my personal opinion, and I don't know, but they would, they would call a special meeting and act however they needed to act, if we went along with it on the 19th, they would probably have a meeting on the 20th, uh, because it's a huge chunk of revenue for that golf course.
Yeah, absolutely.
Don't wanna lose it, so.
I do. No, go ahead.
Okay, I was just gonna say, the problem isn't necessarily here that the golf course is classified a certain way, from what I understand, it's our city ordinance that's just complicated and convoluted, and that's what we need to start fixing before we tell the golf course to necessarily take any direct action, is that correct?
So that, that would be my understanding, so right now, the golf course, so to sell uh, alcohol or liquor, you have to get certified with the state, and then um, you meet the local ordinances, so the golf course does have a 3.2% um, liquor license with the state, so it's my understanding that we would change our ordinances, but they would have to reapply for a state liquor license that meets within our code as well. But, but once they go through that process with the state, then um, it would be, it would be brought forth.
I hope not, because right now to get something approved at the state, it could be October. I mean, I, I hope that we can do this um, internally, by changing our language. Um, I, I'm just, that's my hope. I, I'm, I'm just, that's my hope. But you know, I don't know how quick you're going to get any kind of turnaround on a license application at the state right now.
I mean, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure we, we can only get, give someone a liquor license once they meet the state requirements for the state liquor license.
And yeah, that, that, that's my understanding, but but I, I don't want to sort of give a definitive answer on that without being certain, but that is my understanding. Yeah.
And haven't they met those requirements?
They've met the requirements for a 3.2% state liquor license, which then qualified them to have a 3.2% liquor license with the city. So I think if they want an on sale license, I think they would have to apply with the state then to get an on sale license because the on sale was, is different than the 3.2% liquor license.
Yeah. I, I guess you're proposing there's a difference between those two qualifications. There might be insurance wise. I, I could see that.
Yeah. I'm guessing that they'll have to apply through the state for that separate liquor license as well, but as soon as that's approved through the state, then we can approve them through the city. But we, it, it's my understanding that we wouldn't be able to give a liquor license to someone who has not been approved for that license through the state.
Even though they fall within our code.
That's my understanding.
Well, I was all excited till I heard that.
Is there anything that the, since Mayor Steele, you mentioned that processing through the states is difficult or through the state is difficult right now. Is there anything the city can do to sort of push or accelerate or advocate for that issue?
At the state level, it might not.
Possibly. You know, I, I guess I don't know.
They could turn in their applications now. They could send those up to the state for their wine license or their restaurant or club status.
Yep. Yep. They could do that.
Yeah. If they started the process now, then by the time we were able, because if, if we pass something on May 19th, they would just need to get published before it became active. So if we publish that on May 27th, then realistically that, that's when the ordinance would become active here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'd like to instruct staff to update our liquor license ordinance.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. We've got a motion in a second to start look, working through that archaic license situation. Bob's going to throw his two cents in there and I think that's a good, that's a good suggestion. So we've got a motion, we've got a second discussion.
And again, Jason, that motion is not to amend our existing one, but to scrap it and start fresh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Start over, update it, start over.
Yeah. Change, change as needed, right? I guess.
Right.
So I'm going to instruct the golf course to submit an application tomorrow. And it might get kicked back because it doesn't comply with our, I don't know, but maybe it would, maybe some, but maybe we could put an explanation letter in there that says.
If there's any way we can help expedite that, that'd be great.
Okay. Got a motion in a second to relook at, review our liquor license ordinances. Any further discussion? Jason?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
And I'll say I. Motion passes. Planning Commission, Public Works and Engineering, Public Input. We really don't have anything else, do we?
No.
Anybody got anything else they want to discuss quick? It's, it's not on the agenda. So. All right. Well, then I'll say, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
We're adjourned. Thank you.